This is the Planning and Zoning Commission, August 6, 2012, meeting called to order. May I please have the roll call?
Connie Yoshimura.
Here.
Bruce Phelps.
Stacy Dean.
Here.
Terry Parks.
Here.
Dana Cruz.
Here.
Ray Hickel.
Here.
Peter Mulcahy.
Here.
James Ferguson.
Here.
Tyler Robinson.
Here.
Thank you very much. I have a few announcements to make. First of all, I would like to advise you that case 2012-102, that case has been withdrawn, which was a rehearing for a site plan review. So, there are those of you in the chamber that is here for that particular case, that case will not be heard. That's the Rabbit Creek Community Church case. That case will not be with her, be heard tonight. The petitioner has withdrawn their case. I would also ask the commission for a motion to postpone case G3, case 2012-089. This request is at the request of the petitioner. May I have a motion?
So moved, ma'am.
All right. Moved by Peter Mulcahy and Stacy Dean. Thank you very much. I would also entertain-
May I get your pardon?
Is there, are there any objections?
I didn't get what you were saying.
It is the G3. It is the Paul Snyder, the Site Plan Review for a Storage Facility. Also, in regards to Chapter 10, case 2011-087, An Ordnance Amending Title 21 for Chugiak Eagle River Land Use Regulations. This public hearing is closed, but I would entertain a motion to reorder the agenda. Commissioner Mulcahy, seconded by Commissioner Parks. Your request is to put it at the end of the public hearings, is that correct? All right, is there any objection? Seeing and hearing none, that case has been moved to the end of the agenda. Thank you very much. Special Order of Business, I'm sorry, the minutes of the meetings, June 4th, June 11th, and July 12th. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes of the meeting, meetings? Commissioner Parks?
No, ma'am. I would like to make a motion that we approve as presented.
All right, thank you very much. May I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Ferguson. Is, are there any objections to the minutes? Seeing and hearing none, those minutes are approved. Special Order of Business, Commissioner Parks, Vice Chair, would you please do the disclosures?
Commissioner Dean.
Yes, D1C, Case Resolution 2012-023, I will not be voting on.
If I remember correctly, you reclusive your case, not the case correctly. Thank you. Commissioner Hickel?
None, thank you.
Mr. Pruse?
I do not have any.
Commissioner Robinson?
No.
Commissioner Fredericks?
None.
And Commissioner Mulcahy?
Nothing, sir.
I have none. Commissioner Yoshimura?
None, thank you. Thank you very much. We are now into the consent agenda, Resolutions for Approval. May I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda? Commissioner Parks?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
All right, thank you very much. It's seconded by Commissioner Ferguson. Are there any comments? Does anyone wish to poll any of the items? Okay. All right, seeing and hearing none. The consent agenda is approved. All right, we are now going into case 2012-088. The Atlas Tower, the Atlas Tower Alaska LLC is the petitioner. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meetings is, one, after the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Item two, persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the Commission Rules of Procedure A. Petitioners, including all of her, his, her representatives, 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. There is only one petitioner's representative, I would like to make that very clear. B, representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, et cetera, five minutes. C, individuals, three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. Four, an individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. Any individual may request written findings from any commission decision within seven days. The other thing that I would ask is that when you come to the podium, if you would please clearly state your name, and if it's complicated, would you please spell it out? Thank you very much. We are now going to hear from staff regarding case 2012-088, Atlas Tower Alaska LLC. This is a PNC appeal of an administrative decision. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Assembly, my name is Jillann Inglis, and I am representing the municipality in this case. 108, we had two cases involving this. The original case was 2012-060, was the original site selection plan review submitted by the petitioner. After the petition was denied, then we had the second case for the appeal. In both cases, 108 public notices were mailed, and in the first case, we did receive a lot of public comment back. In the second case, we did not, however, it's likely because they felt like they had already commented in the first case. It was mixed reviews from the community. Vast majority did not want the tower. The property is zone B1A, local and neighborhood business district. It's right up adjacent to residential districts. And when you look at the packet, under page 39, you'll see an overview, a photo of an overview of the site. And then on page 40 and 41, you'll see the various zoning districts surrounding the property. Also, on page 56A, you'll see a schematic showing the distance of the tower to the various protected land uses in the district. Under AMC 2140, 140, there was three reasons why the tower was denied. First was, the tower was located within 200 percent of a protected land use. And under Anchorage Municipal Code 2145-265, a protected land use is defined as a principal structure on a PLI-zoned land. School buildings, childcare centers are principal residential structures on residentially-zoned land. The second reason why the tower was denied by the administration was that in the, in the B1A, towers are permitted as accessory uses to non-residential structures. This particular piece of property is actually just a parking lot, adjacent to a medical building, and the medical building uses the parking lot. That issue may be resolved by replating the property into one lot. And the petitioner has acknowledged that they would do that should the commission approve this petition tonight. Then the visual impacts of the neighbors and the other structures directly related to the operation of the antenna mounted on the tower structures. Basically, it was incompatible with the appearance or character of the neighborhood was the third reason. With that said, they appealed the, we reviewed the tower. We found that it was in compliance as far as the height for a commercial district. The height of a tower is allowed to be 130 feet in a commercial district, and if they co-locate, they can go up to 30 more feet. This petition is for a 100-foot tower. It met the setback requirements as far as the yard setbacks, but it did not meet the protected land use setbacks for the residential structures in the neighborhood. Therefore, the commission, I mean, the administration recommends denial of this appeal.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from the commission to staff? Ms. Dean.
Through the chair, I have a question for staff on page 57 through 59. If you could put this into perspective for me, those are photos of the area. Could you tell me how tall are the above-ground utility poles in that area? And could you tell me how tall the light poles are in that area that are in the parking lot?
Through the chair, Ms. Dean, I don't know the height of the light poles or the electric poles.
Okay, it's just, the picture, it's a little bit hard to tell. It almost looks like they're not that much different in the photos, so I was just trying to get a perspective on the actual height differences.
Yeah, I agree. I don't know the height of those. It, I agree that in the picture, they look, you know, like they're about the same height, but it might be difficult to tell.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Parks?
I've got a question about the distance from the pole to the existing residential lots. I'm a little confused. I'm looking at C1, the eight-and-a-half-by-17 document they gave us on a drawing that shows the pole and the nearest residence, and they're showing it 107 feet. And I guess, I'm questioning that, if that's something that you've looked at, and that's how you arose that it didn't meet it, or do they need any excess of that?
Madam Chair, Mr. Parks, the tower, technically, if the tower, the allowable height of the tower under the code is 130 feet, therefore, they would have to be at least 260 feet from any of the residential protected land uses such as a house. The department has in the past allowed for a tower to, if the tower was only proposed to be 100 feet, that it only had to be 200 feet, using the 200 percent rule for the actual height of the tower. So they, technically, even if we used the 100 feet, the height of the tower at 100 feet, it would have to be at least 200 feet from any house.
So either way, this would not meet the code requirement, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ferguson?
I have a minor question to staff. On page 149 and page 157, is there any difference between these two, or why is it put in twice?
149 and?
157.
I agree that they're the same.
Thank you.
I don't know why.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other questions of staff at this time? All right, in matter of case 2012-088, may we hear from the petitioner's representative, please? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Mark Melchert, M-E-L-C-H-E-R-T, and also with me here today is Tierney Rowe from Atlas Tower, the petitioner. Atlas Tower requests that the commission approve this facility in order to permit the provision of needed services to this area of Anchorage. The department originally denied the application administratively and then also recommended against granting the appeal. But what we think is noticeably and basically completely absent from the recommendation and consideration by the department is consideration of the need for services and the increasing need for services, but more importantly, the absence of other suitable alternatives for a facility to provide services in this area of Anchorage. Atlas Tower worked for months with Verizon, which is a company looking to enter the Anchorage market next year, to locate a site for a wireless communications facility in this area of Anchorage near the corner of Northern Lights and Lake Otis Boulevards. They reviewed multiple sites, and I would refer the commission to page 63 of the materials. That is a R propagation map that shows the service that would be provided based on existing facilities and planned facilities for this area. And the commissioners can see the yellow area in the center, the hole, is the area that would be served if this facility is approved. If this facility is not approved, then there needs to be another facility in this area in order to provide reasonable and the type of service that our community demands. The next page in the packet, page 64, is the same map with this facility in place. You can see that the, you know, everything is orange and red, which indicates the level of service. Going back to the yellow and the white, what that means is, when it's yellow, it's poor service in buildings and fair service in cars. And the result of that, particularly now with the increasing demand for data, is the lower level of service, the worse the data performance. And so, our community has a need for new facilities to support all the wireless devices that people in our community want and that our businesses need. The code also supports the idea of co-location, as we have more demand for services in our city. This facility is proposed to support four providers at one site. As I noted, we worked with Verizon. We also submitted as part of the file a letter from ACS expressing its interest. I understand there are some of the providers here tonight. We've also received expression of interest from GCI. And we've submitted the required notarized statement that this facility will be available for co-location. The essential point is that Atlas Tower spent a significant amount of time looking for a way that services can be provided in this area of Anchorage, and the commissioners are probably familiar. If you go, this area is basically south of Merrill Field, down towards the university. Most of the area, it's a dense urban residential area of Anchorage. And in our opinion, and based on what we looked at, it is probably impossible to cite a new wireless facility to serve the residents in that area without having some visual impact on some residential neighborhood. That's just the reality of this area of Anchorage. The public comments that were submitted, of course, included opposition by neighbors who don't want the visual, don't want to see a facility in their area. But those same, some of those neighbors in those same neighborhoods also supported the problem that they face, that in this area of Anchorage, there's poor coverage, that they experienced dropped calls, and they would like to see, some of the folks that live in this, these neighborhoods want to see better service. And so they actually support the location of this facility. The municipality's, the department's recommendation doesn't even address that issue. It focuses almost exclusively on the fact that there will be some impact on the residential areas. With respect to the separation distance, the code recognizes that there is a tension between the needs of the community and the interests of individual property owners. It permits for a waiver, or a reduction, or even an elimination of the separation distance. As the staff noted here, the distance would be 200 feet for a 100-foot tower. The closest corner of a structure right now is 116 feet, as reflected on the map that the commissioners referred to earlier. The department's recommendation indicates or does not suggest that there's any concern here whatsoever for safety. It has not identified that there's any problems with this facility, which is, you know, within the 116 feet of the nearest structure, that is a safety concern. We have submitted all the technical and engineering drawings and data that demonstrated facility that will be built to meet or exceed all current standards. And instead, the separation of distance appears to be an issue simply of a visual impact on the adjacent neighborhood. One of the commissioners referred earlier to a photograph showing the utility poles, and that, it's a photo simulation of the proposed facility. And we found a site that's at the corner of two relatively busy streets in a commercial section of Anchorage that has commercial buildings on it, has other existing utility infrastructure. And so one of the things that you're looking for when you're looking for a site is to minimize the impact on the local neighborhoods. A site needs to be technologically feasible. You need to have an owner that's willing to permit the facility on the site, and you want to try to minimize those impacts. And we think the record reflects here that Atlas Tower did that, and that in order to provide service for this area in Anchorage, it is necessary to have new facilities, and this is a great, it is a good site. And it is, you know, there are not other suitable alternatives, and we have not seen anything from the department in its recommendation or otherwise that expresses that there might As the staff noted, we are willing to address the lot line issue through a short plaid to remove that lot line. We are willing to discuss with the commission any conditions that the commission might think appropriate for landscaping, for sledding fences, for paint color. We have discussed those issues with the department and with the staff. And we're also willing to discuss how, if there are any other ways to minimize the impact that might occur, that people may be concerned with, to support a facility that we think the community needs in order to assist and support providers coming into our market and to assist and support existing providers.
Excuse me, you have only 232 seconds left for rebuttal, so we do have some questions from the commission. Ms. Dean.
Through the chair, my question is, is there another location on the lot? Could the pole be brought farther towards the street?
May I ask Ms. Rowe to help assist in answering the questions?
Yes.
If it pleases the commission.
My name's Tierney, T-I-E-R-N-E-Y, Rowe with Atlas Tower. Madam Chair and the commission, the, we explored opportunities to move the tower on the lot. The problem is parking on the lot. There are required parking spaces to, mandated by code. If we move the tower, we could impact those parking spaces. There was a traffic study, a parking impact study actually submitted in your packets that you can reference, and that parking impact study took a great deal of time to maneuver the tower in the right place so that we were able to facilitate the adequate number of parking spaces.
Do you know the height of the utility pole that are, is very close, there's a utility line that runs through there? Do you know how high those poles are and how high the light poles are on the lot? Do you know by any chance?
Commissioner Dean, I do not know the height of the light poles on the lot. I do know the height of the utility transmission lines that run along Northern Lights. They're 75 feet.
So they're 75 already, and then we're putting in a 100-foot pole very close to those utility poles?
They're 75, yes. The utility transmission lines that run along Northern Lights are 75 feet already.
Okay, thank you.
And you can see those in the background of your photo sim.
Commissioner Pruse?
Thank you. On the, on the existing, or the locations on page 63 and 64, are these all Atlas or Verizon towers?
Commissioner Pruse, these are Verizon towers.
All right. Do you have a map of any other communication company towers in the area?
I have what's included in your packet of the towers in the existing area. There is a GCI tower that's actually being moved, and it will become the Mulcahy Park Tower that's listed in this propagation study. There's also a Vision Alaska Tower, which is actually not there. If you drive directly to the coordinates, there is no tower there, so that's erroneous. And then there is also the 45-foot existing pole to the west, the AT&amp;T Pole. But other than that, there aren't any structures in the near vicinity.
So you don't, do you have a map that shows their coverage? If you overlaid it, if, for example, overlaid it with what, the towers that you proposed other than this one? If there would be more yellow or less yellow, or if you co-located on an existing tower to show that?
They currently can't co-locate on any structure to get the coverage that they need in this area. It's not structurally feasible to co-locate on the AT&amp;T Tower, and there aren't any other structures. Can you please clarify? I'm having trouble understanding what you're asking me.
I was just curious if there was other towers in the area, and you, you show us the coverage, yellow, you know, orange and red. If the other, other, other companies' towers were located in their coverage and overlaid it on this, so we could kind of see what the whole area would look like?
It would be very similar, because as you can see, if you look at the, there's a Google map within your packet. I'm not sure of the exact page number, but you can obviously see a lack of structures in the area, and those are all of the FCC-registered constructed towers within the area.
And my last question is, did you consider putting two towers in different locations to get the same coverage versus one, or to achieve the same goal?
To?
Different, different location, two towers to cover that yellow area?
Well, this tower is obviously network interdependent with Verizon, so the placement is based on engineering specifications, so to move, to place two different towers would be actually quite difficult. It would require a lot more due diligence than was done for this initial case, and would, essentially, there's not another neighborhood where we could place a structure that wouldn't cause just as much concern as this one in this, in this area. They're all, they're all going to cause some sort of visual impact to residential zones, so in this case, we felt it was better to go with co-location as mandated by code and have one structure that can accommodate four providers within an 1,864 square foot area, which is pretty compact, instead of spreading out and going with different structures in different areas.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ferguson?
What would be the impact if you were to lower the tower to 75 feet?
It's possible that we could consider reducing the height of the tower to appease and mitigate, to appease public concern and mitigate some of the visual impact. However, any height that we lose will affect co-location feasibility. So if we drop to below 80 feet, we will lose two colocators.
There's reference in the correspondence to the Shriner Tower. I assume that's one of the ones you were referencing when you were talking about co-location.
Correct, Commissioner Ferguson. It's actually just west of our currently proposed tower. It's 45 feet. It's a galvanized steel monopole.
Thank you.
Commissioner Parks?
I've got a couple of quick questions. The first question is, the co-location is a fairly important item for cell tower users today because of the cost of putting them up. On this particular tower, if you were to have it approved, would it reduce the number of antennas in this area at all if you could co-locate?
It would reduce the number of towers necessary in this area, correct. This facility would house four, so it would reduce the number of structures that would need to be built.
Would there be any removed that are currently installed, or is that just in the future?
There would be relocation of currently installed antennas.
And how many would that affect?
Likely one carrier at this point, possibly two.
Okay. And then my next question is a question that's somewhat of an experienced question that I have. We have several cell towers on our properties that we own in the city, and one of the things that we've done in the past when we had parking issues is we put the facilities inside the existing billy. I'm talking about the electronics that run it. Has that been something you've looked at at this facility? Is there any space available in the building that you could use to locate the electronics so your footprint would be- so your footprint would be much smaller, so you would not have the parking issue?
There is not currently additional space available in the building. There's a C Care clinic as well as a small office, and then an MRI imaging center called Alaska Innovative Imaging. And also, there's an MRI machine in the back of the building, and so they wanted us to make sure that our equipment was separated from that, from the MRI machine.
Thank you.
I have two questions. First, by moving the tower, which I believe would be to the north, how many, say 20 feet or 25 feet, how many parking spaces would the parking lot lose as a result of that?
I would have to look at the calculations based in the traffic study, but essentially there's code mandated parameters for size, and so I'd have to go back and review the size and let you know on the parking spaces. I could look at it. But my guess would be probably four.
Four parking spaces?
Yeah.
Out of a total of how many parking spaces?
I would need to look. I think there's, do you have the page in front of you by chance?
No, I don't.
Okay. I can look at it and double-check. But it was also a request of the landlord that we put the facility in the back of the lot because there are a lot of Medicare and Medicaid patients that come into the C Care clinic. And so they have special needs to be able to get to the clinic without, you know, working around other obstacles. So he wanted us removed and put into the back of the lot.
Okay, I understand that motivation. Julian, if you'd just stay put for a second. Julian?
Madam Chair, I was going to ask a question of the petitioner, if I may?
Okay.
Through the chair. For the co-locations, are you proposing to go any higher than the 100 feet?
Julian, no, we will not.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. I would like to know how many parking spaces would be disruptive. I mean, there's the landlord, but there's also the neighborhood. So I would like to know the number of parking spaces in the parking area and by locating it, how many parking spaces would be lost. And then, sir, I have one question for you. You indicated in your opening remarks that you were discouraged from making an appeal. And I was wondering, could you elaborate a little bit on that? If you would?
No, if I indicated that I was discouraged by anyone for making an appeal, no, that's not what I intended to say, if that's what I said.
Okay, so maybe...
You know what from the municipality discouraged us from making an appeal? Absolutely not.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. All right, we are now ready for public comments. If you wish to comment on this case, 2012-088, would you please come forward at this time? Yes, sir.
Yes, my name's Dave Morgan. I'm the past president of the Rogers Park Community Council. I currently serve on their board, but I'm also a fellow commissioner. I serve on the Health Commission for the municipality and was the former chair there. I'm not speaking for the community council or any organized group. I do live at 2170 Stanford, which is about, I think about 800 yards, maybe 900 yards from where the tower will be at. And by profession, I've worked in the health community as an economist for the last 25 years. And I've lived at Rogers Park or on Stanford for the last 15 years at the same address. I think I've not heard or read anything about a safety concern, but basically planning and zoning rules, which are important. I live and I work and have worked all my adult career, except for two years in the United States Army, in a highly regulated business. But the one thing we're not discussing is the UMed district, which I've also served on the UMed district, planning and work, is in the next two years, two to three years, you're going to have $120 million of construction, all within a mile and a half of this tower. Mostly medical, expansions of long-term care, of health support industries, small businesses. And if you really look at the zone, there are many small business offices and facilities that support healthcare. The UMed district and that area, which this is part of, has not only been a major employment, a major health activity for the city, it's rapidly becoming the center of healthcare for the state. We desperately, I would, I know, need width. We need to have access to towers like this. I know pixels, measuring pixels is important when you're doing this, but basically, a tower there, a tower across the street, will still interrupt as many pixels, no matter where you move it. I do think that that should have been and could have been a consideration in this process, that we're going to have a massive change in the business that's going on in that area in healthcare, and we're going to have great expansions of those support industries. But so since I'm not representing anybody, but only here to represent myself, I have three minutes. So is there any questions or any clarifications?
I don't see anything in the queue. So thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you for your time. I know what it's like to be over there making these decisions. They're not easy. And you're all volunteers. That's what a lot of people forget sometimes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Will the next person please come forward?
Hi, my name is Wendy Davis, and I just wanted to point out that GCI and ACS are planning on merging, and therefore they're going to share all the existing towers that they have. I also want to show a little over a mile away, there is a tower that's actually owned by Verizon. So I find it interesting that they're saying they need this particular tower because Verizon needs to come into Alaska. Well, they own this tower that is on Gamble and 15th, and it is 100 feet tall. I have the perspective of where they want that. Did I? It would lose the integrity of our area, where we live, our community. The small, little commercial district, there are two buildings that are two stories high. Everything is one level. It's a restaurant, dry cleaners, things for the community to be able to access. A tower would ruin our property value from every view. I have them all passed them out. It would ruin the view from our homes. I already stare at the AT&amp;T Tower, at the Shriner's, and my backyard, it would be hovering above. And in this picture here, they're showing that the tower looks like it's the same size as the electrical poles. The electrical poles are 60 feet tall. Therefore, the tower would be another 40 feet above that, so the perspective is way off. Also, I heard that they are talking about putting all the electrical poles underground on Northern Lights, so therefore there'd be nothing in the area taller than the monopole, which is already 45 feet. It would hover over the trees that are 40 feet in the area, and it, this man lives 800 feet away, and he wouldn't even notice this tower because his house faces a different direction. We already have the 50-foot cell tower, they already tried to, or 45 feet, they already tried to make it 100. What else? I think that's it. I do have pictures of this I can pass out to you, that they already have a tower. So I don't see this tower needing to be in our small community where people have been living there for 40 years, built their homes. And I just can't say how this would ruin it. And I understand the need for a tower, but there's one a mile away that they can use.
All right. Thank you very much for your testimony. Are there any questions? Seeing and hearing none, will the next person please come forward? Please go forward.
My name is Jeannie Ostmes, and if you look on page 56A, I have the L-shaped home there. And in the northern view of that home is a large lawn area with a greenhouse, and it's our backyard. And you can see that if we went out to our backyard, there'd definitely be a visual very similar to what you see, I believe, on page 96. I think the trees that they're showing on page 96 are very similar to what we have. The residential area in College Village is from definitely the 60s. The houses were built back there. There are many older homes that are single ranch homes. Some of the homes have been bought out and additions have been added to them. But basically, you have a residential area that is single level, some double level. But the medical building at this point is, has come, within the last 10 years, I don't know really how new it is, but at least since 2007, they've added to the building, they've put more and more into it. A couple of years ago, they put these huge round lights that shine over the eight-foot fence that we have. And it's, we're dealing with what's there already commercially. We have huge fans that are coming out the back of the Mexican restaurant that's there. We're dealing with that. We have visuals that we can cover with trees that we plant, or bushes, or whatever we do to landscape it to make it look better. But we'll never be able to landscape a view of a 100-foot pole with what you see on page 96, in my estimation. Rogers Park Community College, our community council, was against this in the beginning, and they do not meet through the summer. We've requested this packet of information earlier through the summer. I know I called twice, I think Wendy's called a couple of times. I did get a call back today that I could take a look at this. The website was hard to get open. I went to the mayor's office, and the mayor's executive secretary finally got me to a spot where I could read this. Looking at it today, I mean, since for the first time besides one time on the internet, we have visitors in town, most of the people in this community are doing what we do in the summer, traveling, visiting, fishing. So the responses you receive in the back, I believe those same people would say the same thing if they had the time this summer to deal with an appeal. I believe their, their words still stand, that they would be against it as well as the community council. I believe that we don't need this tower in this specific spot. I believe if they went across Lake Otis, there's a church property there, there's a school property. If you look at the circle that they were talking about, there's university land that if they went a little bit further east, that would still cover that same blank area that they have. I just think it would be basically an eyesore for a residential area. And in my case, looking out my backyard, I really don't want to see something like that, whether they put a tree in front of it, or paint it green, or do whatever they can to try and disguise it. You're not going to disguise a 100-foot tower. And I just don't think it's proper for the residential area. And with the university nearby and the church and the school area, I believe there could be other areas. They could go north of Lake Otis on the right-hand side. You guys are going to tear out that whole Lake Otis area and move those homes to widen Lake Otis. So I think there's other areas that they could choose. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could you spell your name for the record, please?
Last name, O-S-T-M-E-S. First name, Jeannie, J-E-A-N-N-E.
All right, thank you very much. May the next person please come forward?
Hi, my name is Kirsten Brogan, B-R-O-G-A-N. And if you look at 56, page 56, my home is right next to Jeannie's on the map. If you also look out, consider looking out the back of my house, you can see what my view would be if this tower were built. My family and I, when we investigated neighborhoods to purchase in to raise our family, this is going to be our family home that we're going to raise our kid in, College Village is established, it's beautiful, it has tall, mature trees, wide streets, friendly neighbors, and we purchased a home there for all that. Looking out our dining room window, our kitchen window, our bedroom window at a cell tower really wasn't sort of what we were considering we were going to buy our house. And if we were to look to sell our house now, if a cell tower were built there, I don't think it would be sellable at the price that we purchased. We want to live, we want to live here and raise our family here, and a view out the back of a 100-foot tall cell tower just wasn't in the cards for us. So if you could consider supporting the administrative decision on denying this, I'd appreciate it. So thanks for the time.
Thank you very much. Would the next person please come forward?
Good evening. My name is Kim Matherne. I live at 2901, me and our family. And I want to concur with what you just said, that I'm concerned with the property value and then it being an eyesore. It is basically, we live right on the edge of the commercial area, but there's other buildings and other areas. I feel that if they want to have a 100-foot tower, they could maybe access another area and leave the neighborhood as is. And then another concern may be insurance, because people with tall trees and stuff, if this thing was to fall, I mean, would our insurance on our homes go up? So I think that's everyone's concern too with that, not only the eyesore, but the property value is depreciating and our home insurance going up because of a tall structure that was not there originally. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Would the next person please come forward?
Madam Chair, members of the Assembly, my name is Tate Kenny, and I'm here on behalf of ACS Wireless. As mentioned before, there are other carriers that do utilize that area and recognize the area as a portion of the city that is in need of coverage. ACS currently operates a facility on top of the Charter College Building. As was mentioned before, that there was interest in trying to see if providers could use buildings around the area. ACS already is doing that. And the height of that rad center for those antennas is about 40 feet. And unfortunately, while we do operate there, it is not sufficient for the coverage that ACS desires to provide for the area. Upon hearing that there is a potential for a taller structure that would be there and be available for co-location, ACS is very interested in that. ACS has a history of co-locating on Atlas Towers, specifically in the midtown and south Anchorage areas. There are definitely several that we have located on and utilized, and appreciate that partnership. If you are to travel around town, Atlas Towers, generally, their towers do utilize the co-location availability. They have multiple carriers on them. When they say that they are actively looking for that, they do, and it's there, and ACS does utilize that. One of the points of concern that I have is it's been mentioned that towers can be moved to other locations. I believe someone was talking about moving it a mile to, I don't know which direction, but a mile away. Cellular and wireless communication design of any, whether it's communications data, whatever it is. Wireless design is a fine line of elevation and distance. An antenna can only handle so many calls, traffic data, whatever it may be, it can only handle so much. And if you were to try to put something a mile away to cover person A that mile away, you've still got all of those people in between that get covered. And if they utilize all the traffic that an antenna can utilize, you no longer reach that person you were trying to cover. So it's not necessarily feasible to take the area that you want to cover and put a tower out there unless you can significantly increase that height and limit its propagation to only that area. So in order to be a mile away, you actually have to get taller so that you reach your designed area. There was another question about... There was another question about the, the propagation map that someone was asking about overlaying to see what the other carrier's coverage would be on top of Verizon's proposed propagation. While that is nice on paper, each carrier kind of does, they utilize their own technologies. So while you would see a total propagation, that doesn't mean that that hole gets filled in for all the other carriers. Each carrier has their own facility and just because someone else is there doesn't mean that they get to utilize that just based off of licensing and, and technologies. So on, on behalf of ACS Wireless, we are in support and are definitely interested in utilizing this tower if it can be approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are some questions in the queue, so Ms. Dean.
Through the chair, could you tell me on top of Charter College is where your antenna is right now?
Yes.
Is it possible to go higher with that antenna?
One of the things, and it's been stated previously, is that this is an older established area of the city and a lot of the buildings are of older construction and specifically Charter College is a building that is built of wood construction. And when you start building cellular facilities in a building and on top of a building, there's a pretty large engineering effort that has to go into that. There are codes, there are building maintenance, things that have to happen. So to really make that thing taller is, is not feasible at this point. You get into the, let alone the aspects of, of building it and trying to utilize a building that was not designed for that purpose as a tower is to accommodate for it, the wind loading, the forces that are associated with it, don't really come into play, plus the maintenance aspect. Anytime you start dealing with a building and you change its, its original use, you can only accommodate to so much so that you can maintain life safety. So it, it comes from a point of trying to provide a service to an area to becoming a life safety issue. So there is, there is a fine line and while this, the facility up there right now has currently been engineered, designed to be safe, to try to build it taller would not be something that would be feasible, really.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Pruse.
You mentioned that on the Charter College building, it wouldn't be feasible. What, what does that mean? What's feasible?
When, when she asked about becoming, raising our elevation on that, that building.
Is it cost? Is it?
It's not cost. It's actually a, a limitation to the building construction. The building construction is that if you were to get inside the building like as, as we had to to get inside, you'll notice that it's just parallel beam, wood frame construction, it's not metal trusses, it's, and it, it does not carry that weight, it cannot support it. When you start talking about towers versus buildings, there's a lot of engineering, and I'm sorry if I'm not specifically answering what you want.
I guess, did you do an economic analysis of upgrading the building to take a taller tower?
To upgrade the building would be-
You did, how much?
Rather, no, not an economic analysis, an engineering analysis.
Okay, did you do that?
Well, the, the question would be is how many people, you know, it's, it's designed to be a building, it's not designed to be a rooftop to hold significant forces, it's designed for specific loading, right?
Feasibility and cost, so you say it's not feasible-
If we were to replace the entire building, walls, structure, parking facility underneath, things like that, anything for any amount of money could, but it would likely result in the entire replacement of that building to accommodate a cellular tower or cellular facility on top of it.
Did, did you go through that economic analysis?
No, no, sir, we did not. It was an engineering effort, not an, not an economic effort.
Okay, and, and, and my last question is on Charter College's parking lot, did you, did you, did they consider putting a taller tower on the parking lot and off the building?
Not in the parking lot because of the same reason of, of parking and traffic flow. The Charter College in itself is unique in the fact that it has underground parking facilities in there, so there's a lot of moving traffic through that. So to try to block that off and they have significantly more people in it, so their parking requirements are more stricken than across the street from my understanding. We did utilize, as you've said, I believe it was you that mentioned, putting equipment inside the buildings and that is good and in times that can happen and other times it's very difficult to do that because of power limitations, space limitations, feasibility of fire protection, egress, there's all of those code issues that come into account when you start putting additional electronic equipment inside of a building. So all those things have to come into account. So while that does happen as it did at Charter College, it doesn't always happen.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hickel.
Looking at your map, can you put this in simple terms in that area? If I'm looking at my cellphone, do I get one bar? Do I get a dropped call? Do I get two bars? Is it iffy? Can you describe what the cell service is?
You will, I believe the, the comments, and I'm not sure from which provider those, those comments were from, but there are dropped calls from, from providers, yes, and you, you can drop a call and it just really depends on where you're at, where you're going and what the traffic is on at the time.
And, and does anybody have any type of data that shows the percentage of nine-one-one calls, whether they're from cell phones or from landlines?
That is data that, that is there. Menstrual E-nine-one-one does track that type of information. Unfortunately, I do not have that with me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that would be useful for me, but thank you.
All right, I see no one else in the queue. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
All right, would the next person please come forward?
My name is Michelle Johansson. I'll just be very brief, a couple of things that I noticed. I have lived in that area. I lived in Rogers Park for seven years and my husband and I and our family have lived in College Village on Yale Drive for the past twenty-four years. I have had a cellphone for probably most of that time and I've never had a dropped call, ever. And I've lived and worked in that area, I was, I'm a principal of a school, I've worked at Rendler and Rogers Park and all in that area, never had a dropped call. I do understand that we're going to have a lot of medical professionals in that area and we love having that, but just, how many of you, just by a show of hands, have actually been where they want to put this, this tower? Just a couple of you, three? Okay.
I'm not really sure that that's an appropriate question, but-
I'm, I'm sorry, I, what I'm trying to get at is right across the street is a Medical Park family, or family group, there's a, right by where the Charter College is, there's a great big parking lot. If it's going to benefit a lot of people over there, then that might be a really good place for it. There's the university to the east, there's, there's just lots of places all around there. Someone perhaps could be able to absorb, some group could maybe absorb the cost of that, but the, the op, the other option by putting that tower in our neighborhood is that the neighbors and I will absorb the cost of that. It'll be an eyesore and it'll be, you know, it definitely will make our property values drop, so thank you.
Thank you. Would the next person please come forward?
Madam Chair, Members of the Committee, my name is Tim Potter. I live at eighteen hundred Stanford Drive and use the alley quite a bit as I get food from the Burger Cash. You can win a thousand dollars there, you know? I'm a fan of cell phones, I use them all the time. The only place in, from thirty-six to DeBar Road and from midtown east that I ever dropped calls in this area is one hundred feet in length along the north side of Dan Coffey's building because you're totally blocked from, from coverage. The buildings that are in this small corridor along Northern Lights or, Northern Lights Boulevard and the alley in College Village subdivision is Zone B-one. The reason the buildings are one story and two stories high is that it's Zone B-one. It's supposed to be a neighborhood scale, small scale, friendly to the area type of development. The existing monopole that's at the Shriners is about forty-five feet tall and it actually is not that far out of character with the neighborhood. A hundred feet is totally out of character with the neighborhood. That's twice as high as any of the trees in the neighborhood. It's probably three or four times taller than any of the buildings that are in that area and because it's Zone B-one, the buildings will never be taller than they are now. They can go to a height of twenty-five to thirty feet and that's it. As frequenting that area, I would not like to live directly next to it and I really don't want to look at it from my house as I'm looking towards the mountains. I think that I could live with multiple forty-five-foot towers if that's the issue, that they have to spread them around to get coverage and build them in scale and character with the area, but a hundred-foot tower is, is totally unreasonable, out of character with the area and is not the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no questions in the queue.
Thanks.
Would the next person please come forward?
My name is Ann Wild. I live about five properties away on Sheldon Jackson Street. I've lived in this area for about twenty-three years and as you weigh the competing needs and interests in this situation, I'd ask you to look at the long-term and what's happened in that area as well. While I have lived there, the Seven-Eleven became a brown jug store where I would have preferred a more family-friendly business, that's done. Then the one-cell tower was put in and now they want this hundred-foot cell tower and I too began to wonder about the integrity of a neighborhood and the idea of allowing small businesses in close to neighborhoods, then they grow and change and change the integrity of the area. I also, when I looked through the materials that were provided, I noticed that in the photos that they provided and you picked up on it, the perspective of the tower, none of those perspectives were from the neighborhood to give an idea what it might look like from there. So I ask you to think carefully, I understand. I also have never had a problem with cellular service in the area. I understand that it varies on where you are, but so far I think the service is fine and I appreciate what we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Would the next person please come forward? Is there anyone else here who wishes to testify?
Hello, my name is Derek Peterson. I'm a construction engineer for Verizon Wireless and I know for a fact in this area, we started about at the same time as Atlas doing site acquisition, trying to find a location for a tower site. And a lot of those areas that were across the street, Charter College and the parking lot, the church, they've all been approached and they weren't really interested in having a lease. So I just wanted to say that this, this location is very, is, is very important and it fits as a part of our core RF frequency group. It all fits together as one system, so, I mean, I, I'm very supportive and I think it's a great site. I mean, the last thing anybody wants to do is, is to try to impact a neighbor in some sort of a negative way. What we really want to do is just provide good communications and data, so, and plus I'm here to answer any questions you may have for me.
Could you please clarify whether or not you are an engineer for Verizon or-
I'm a construction engineer, that's correct. I do the construction management.
For Verizon?
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much for your testimony. I'm not sure that, um, that, Brian? Yeah. All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions? Seeing and hearing none, thank you. Are there any other people who wish to testify? Anyone else at all? All right, the petitioner's representative has two minutes and thirty-two seconds left for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of points of clarification. First, with respect to, I think, the first comment, the other facility referred to was the Mulcahy Tower that was on the, on the propagation study that we, we walked through earlier. So at least for this proposal, that, that tower is part of this interpendent, interdependent service system. And with respect to, if the commission has any questions about alternative sites, some alternative sites were mentioned, Ms. Rao is willing and certainly available to ask, answer any of those questions because Atlas Tower did conduct a, a pretty thorough assessment of alternative sites and I think we can address those hopefully to the satisfaction of the And while we would, you know, absolutely the application, you know, you know, in the, is preferred and is requested for a one-hundred-foot facility, as we discussed a little bit earlier in response to one of the commissioners' questions, we can work with less and still advance the goal of co-location and, you know, it may limit the future somewhat, but if that helps address the concerns of, of this commission so that this project can go forward to, you know, address these issues about next generation services, we can push that down to about eighty feet. But again, we prefer the, the height, you know, the application height, but if that helps address the concerns, I think we can work with that.
There are still some questions for you, Commissioner Ferguson and then Ms. Dean.
Over here on this side. This drawing that was handed out, have you seen this drawing?
Yes, sir.
This empty, empty new tower, does it exist?
Based, based, that is the, the facility that's at issue on this hearing if I'm reading this map correctly.
Okay, so-
Correct. The, the empty new tower is, does not exist, correct?
It does not exist.
Right, that's the proposed facility that we're, we're here for the hearing on.
This appear to indicate two sites, you're saying one.
I think the, the, as I read this, this map, the empty new tower and proposed tower refers to this site. And the other tower referred to at Gamble is, is the Mulcahy Tower that is on the RF propagation study.
Madam Chair, can I get some clarification from the person that prepared this or-
Yes, you may. All right, it would be preferable if the commissioner could answer the question, so if you'll just wait one moment.
I, I know that site. We sold it to Verizon. It is in existence, it's not up and running yet, they're moving a forty-five-foot tower to a hundred-foot tower on Fifteenth and Gamble right behind the Crazy Horse. That's what you're looking at.
Okay, so if, if, if there is going to be a new tower at Fifteenth and Gamble that doesn't show on your drawing, what does that do for your coverage?
If we, if we go to page sixty-three in the, in the package, that tower is part of and is reflected on this map as the Mulcahy Park site.
Okay.
And so the, the site we're talking about today provides coverage for a different area than that, than that, the Mulcahy Tower.
So the tower may be empty today, but it is reflected on the drawing on page sixty-three?
Correct, that, that is correct.
Thank you, no further questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dean.
Just a point of clarification, we talked about the height of the utility poles, you know, for the electrical power, being seventy-five feet and one of the neighbors mentioned that it was only sixty feet. Could I get that clarified as to exactly how high those utility poles are?
In the photo that we-
I'm just trying to put it in comparison to-
Right. In the photo we discussed earlier, there's actually two sets of utility poles. One is in the alley that is reflected on the photo simulation, the other, in that same photo, you can see some steel towers in the background that are along Northern Lights and those are the towers that are, are the poles that are higher, are that are seventy-five feet.
Okay, so the, so the, the neighborhood towers, the non-distribution lines are on sixty-foot poles?
That's my understanding, correct.
And the distribution lines are on seventy-five-foot poles?
Correct, so there's two different sets of poles.
Okay, and they're both running in that alley behind the property?
No, the one set of poles I understand is along the Bull, Northern Lights, along the street and the wood poles are in the alley.
Okay, so the local lines are in the alley at sixty feet and the big distribution lines are seventy-five feet and on Northern Lights, so-
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Commissioner Parks.
Madam Chair, I have a question to staff if I could, please. Under the, on page eleven of your package, it talks about the amount of feet that it has to be away from residential area and it references a code. Can you explain to me if there's a waiver for that or if it has to be applied for or exactly how that would work? Under a variance or?
Madam Chair, Mr. Parks, I'm glad you asked that question. I was going to clarify the waiver issue. They did request a waiver from the administrative official. It does not require a zoning board of examiners and appeals variance. If you look at twenty-one forty-five, two sixty-five, I have to get into it, sorry. Sixteen, sixteen for a minimum separation distance. It, it- It outlines a process to request a waiver, and in this case, we took into account the community comments, the comments of the, the community council did not respond in writing, that I know of, but we took into account the community comments, and that's why we denied the waiver. However, in this case, if the commission approves it, you could act in that capacity and approve a waiver.
Are there any other questions? All right. What is the wish of the commission? The public hearing is closed. What is the wish of the commission? Commissioner approves.
In the case of 2012-088, appeal of administrative approval of the site selection and site plan review as for a proposed tower of 2100 East Northern Lights Boulevard, I move to approve. However, I will state that I will not be voting for this, for this...
Motion.
Motion.
Do we have a second for the motion? Seconded by Commissioner Parks. Discussion, comments? Commissioner Parks.
I, too, will not be supporting this motion because of the number of feet from the residential area. I think there's a considerable concern for that, and also because of the zoning, which is local neighborhood businesses, and it doesn't fit in with that need, I don't believe.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there any other comment? I think under the circumstances, we'll use our voting machines. A motion to approve would grant the administrative site variance. A no vote would uphold the administrative's position. The administrative, the appeal of an administrative site has been, in the case of 2012-088, has been denied, and the staff's position has been upheld. Let me clarify for the record that an individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. Any individual may request written findings from any commission decision within seven days. Thank you all very much for that. Moving on.
Did you not show the vote?
I apologize. The vote did not display. Could you state the vote for the record, please?
It was two in favor and six opposed.
Thank you very much. All right. The next case, 2012-090, Postmark LLC. It's a site plan review for a large retail commercial establishment. May we hear from staff?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. As you just mentioned, this is a public hearing site plan review for a large retail establishment under Anchorage Municipal Code 21.50.320. This relates to a site that is just west of where we are now, which is the southeast corner of A Street and 36th Avenue. This site used to be combined with the post office that is just to the south of the site, and the land was subdivided in 2010. There's a current subdivision agreement in place to construct the southern portion of Barrow Street and East 38th Avenue between Barrow and B Street, and those improvements must be complete by the middle of September 2013. The site is zoned B3 with some special limitations. The permanent owner, or future owner and occupant of this proposed large retail establishment is Natural Pantry, and they are proposing a 45,000-square-foot specialty grocery store. Highlights of their site plan include excellent pedestrian access to their site, recognizing that they're a good location for transit and for walkability from neighboring businesses. So again, they have provided good pedestrian facilities into their site. They are providing community spaces, both an indoor and an outdoor area, cafe and eating area, and they may be using these spaces to host community events. Additionally, their building design provides visual interest through changes in shape, materials, and colors. The department finds that the proposal meets the standards and requirements of Title 21 with 10 conditions, and I just wanted to highlight a few of those. Since the staff packet was finalized, there has been an updated traffic impact analysis. The TIA does not have final approval, but the conclusions and mitigation requirements have been agreed upon between the traffic department, the DOT, and the petitioner. Public use easement for a bus shelter will be provided at the bus stop along 36th Avenue, where currently there is only a sign on a pole. And the design, timing, and improvement responsibilities will be resolved between the petitioner and the public transportation department, PeopleMover. The petitioner will also be seeking an administrative approval for a parking reduction, and support for this parking reduction has been indicated by the traffic department and the land use plan review. And the pedestrian facilities that I previously mentioned and the bus shelter are part of the justification for this administrative approval for the parking reduction. The staff recommends approval with the conditions that are listed in the staff packet. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the commission to staff? All right. Seeing and hearing none. The public hearing is now open. As I have previously stated, persons who wish to testify will follow the timelines established in the commission rules of procedures. Petitioners may have 10 minutes, and part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups and community councils, five minutes; individuals, three minutes. And when your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. And any individual may have appeal rights to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. Any individual may request written refinings from any commission decision within seven days. Would you please state your name for the record? Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Tim Potter with Dalhke M. With me tonight is a variety of people. Jerry Neeser with Neeser Construction, the owner of the property. The developers and users of the proposed building, the Solbergs, which is a family-owned specialty grocery store, the Natural Pantry are in the audience. Tara Gallagher with Spark Design, one of the architect representatives, and her staff are here, as is Michelle Ritter and Tanya Hickok with Dalhke M. I'd like to reserve two minutes for rebuttal. First off, as the staff indicated, this is a proposal to build a 40,000-square-foot, plus or minus, specialty grocery store. It is the replacement location for the Natural Pantry store. The improvements related to the subdivision, as the staff indicated, you need to keep in mind that Barrow Street and 38th Avenue will be improved to municipal streets, so that will tie and interlink the area to 38th and C Street, A Street, B Street, 40th Avenue, out to the signalized intersection at 40th and C Street, so that there's full directional turning movement, as well as Barrow Street, and then out through the library. The site of the proposed project is in absolute keeping with the conference of plan. Conference of plan calls for this to be a high-density employ area, where there's a high number of employees and/or residential people in support of that density. We have office buildings. We have extended stay hotels, cinemas, libraries, banks, a variety of office buildings and other businesses in the area. Again, Midtown is that employee center that is growing and continuing to grow. The proposed development will provide an easy shopping location, has indoor/outdoor common space, easily accessible, not just by vehicle, but by walking, bike trail, and bus access. The real good news is that the fairly significant residential neighborhood to the west will be fully served in close walking and/or bus distance to this grocery store shopping experience. The site plan, as you can see, I'd like to cover aspects of the site plan, first being the vehicle access. There is an ingress-only off of A Street, which will unload the intersection of 36th and A Street with vehicles that would typically have to go around and in. They'll be able to come in without going through and plugging up the intersection. Pedestrian access on page 66 is a map that shows all the pet improvements in the area, and there is bus access, that's principal bus access, on A Street, C Street, and 36th Avenue. We are proposing to have a bus stop that's a little bit enlivened over its current light pole sign situation on 36th and front of the store location at this time. We've landscaped along A Street, the perimeter of the site, the parking lots, internal to the parking lots. We've attempted to locate the back of house and the loading area adjacent to the back of house of the post office to reduce the amount of visibility that it has to the surrounding area. Again, we have public space inside and outside. The textures, the colors, the parapet variation, the variation in shapes, I think, makes a lively presentation and will be a bright spot in Midtown as a draw. We've provided you with a rendered site plan that shows the landscaping. We have building materials proposed down below, and then we have a series of building elevations that show all sides of the building, and then we have some very nice renderings that show, in fact, what the building will look like in more detail, so you can get a little bit better of experience, and a nighttime shot with parking lot lights out, so that you can get a real idea of what the lively nature of the lighting is, and the both linear lights that go vertical up and down at the corner to modify the kind of what would be a dead wall, as well as lights on a textured wall along Barrow Street adjacent to the library. So both during the day and the night, there's a varied pedestrian scale, as well as shadows and lights that will enliven the area. We've reviewed the staff's packet and recommendations. We absolutely believe that we've met all of the standards required in the large retail establishment review. We believe that this is a great use and a great location, and this is a great plan, and in addition to the neighborhood. In reviewing the staff's recommendations, I would like to go through them in that we are in full performance and agreement with all of them, but would like to add a minor modification to condition number one, which is simply where it gets to the end and says these conditions of approval. Like to put a period and start a new sentence that says the final concrete exterior materials to be resolved and reviewed with the current planning division. And I wanted to explain that a little bit, in that with the climate conditions and not knowing exactly when we're going to get started on this building, we've considered both tilt-up and block. We've spent a lot of time reviewing with municipal staff the difference in the material, and that, in fact, the outward look of that facility will be effectively the same, irregardless of the product that's used. One is friendlier from a seasonal construction standpoint, that you can tent and keep working through the winter. I do have some colored pictures, not to be voluminous, but to allow the planning commission to see examples of the expression of the different materials, first the proposed, and then what's being asked for, for some flexibility going into the actual construction of this design-build project. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Ms. Dean?
Through the chair. I just had a question about the bike path that goes along A Street. Is it just going to go across the driveway? Does it go under the driveway? What was the plan on that?
There is an existing eight-foot-wide bike trail and bike path at that location. There is a driveway permit that's been issued by DOT. The trail design was modified so that as you get by where there is kind of a sitting area, there's a couple of benches, it breaks off slowly into the site, and then turns to almost a 90, so that when the path has been reworked, it's inboard towards the property line and crossing at 90 degrees. And it was fully reviewed by both our non-motorized trails coordinator with the city, traffic engineering, and DOT, and approved to do that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mulcahy?
Yeah, I apologize. I was just slow getting my, to the right page. Could you restate your recommended change to the staff recommendations?
Yeah, it was simply to, under condition one, in the first paragraph of the condition, where it gets to conditions of approval, semicolon, or colon, put a period there, and then place the final concrete exterior materials to be resolved with current planning division.
Commissioner Parks?
I had just two questions. One is, did you include the bus shelter because it was required, or because you felt it was something that was needed for your property site?
We initially included a bus shelter because we believe that this will be a location that will be used heavily, and that transit ridership will go up at this location. So we went way out of our way to build a very nice raised trail or pathway through the parking lot out to the location of the existing bus sign that's wired to the light pole. In doing that, we did talk to PeopleMover, and we talked to the city, planning staff, and talked about who rightfully should be building the bus shelter. So PeopleMover indicated that they, there's not enough existing right-of-way there to build a bus shelter. So they couldn't do it without getting land from the owner. So we've agreed to go ahead and dedicate a public use easement, granting that public use easement to the city for use for a bus shelter. The way that it's been left is that while the stop now with its current ridership, the position of PeopleMover, is that it doesn't have enough ridership to warrant that, yet taking into condition what they utilize to figure where bus shelters should go, it's the amount of ridership, if there's 25 people or more that get off at that location, and if it is a special needs area, so either disabled people, or that there is some specialty nature. It might be a health facility. They believe and consider that a grocery store is a special needs facility. So where we have left it with Lance Wilber, the director of PeopleMover, is that we're going to provide the public use easement. They want to have a standard, typical bus shelter that conforms with the look of their bus shelter system, so everybody recognizes it as PeopleMover. And the discussion about who supplies that equipment and/or installs it is up for discussion between PeopleMover and us, as they look at their budgets and see what they can do. But there will be a bus shelter there.
Yeah, the condition says shall. That's one of my questions.
It says shall, and there is a memorandum from Lance Wilber in the packet that indicates that they will be working with us to determine, as long as we provide the public use easement, the consideration that they may pay all or part of it is still on the table, and that's okay with us.
Yeah, the other concern I have is maintenance of that facility. If I were the building owner, I would want to have some control of the cleaning of that particular building and keeping it up to the standard that you may want, other than what the public standard may be. Is that your concern?
And in talking to the Solbergs, after Mr. Neeser provides the public use easement, and then the liability associated with the facility goes to the city, the Solbergs have indicated that from an operation standpoint, it's okay for them to do basic maintenance of it, to make sure that it's kept in a style that is presentable to their clientele and their employees that will be using that facility.
The other question I have is item number nine, where it says you shall remove... all the snow within seventy-two hours." As we all are aware, that sometimes that's very difficult. Can you live with the seventy-two hours, I guess?
Well, that's a basic guideline, and that's what a lot of projects have been required to commit to. And, you know, for all intents and purposes, we're willing to commit to that. And I believe that the language that got added to number ten is probably appropriate, where, to the extent practicable. I mean, if we get a three-foot snow and everything's a mess, it might not happen in seventy-two hours. Or it might happen faster than the city gets their stuff taken care of.
It doesn't say that, though. That's just, thank you.
Commissioner Malkay?
Yeah, I apologize. I shouldn't have gotten to those. I'm not clear on the improvements to Barrow and Tine in the Thirty-Eighth and the additional median required. Who's responsible? And the map uses a pretty broad stroke to show that intertie. I like the impact on the park.
Thirty-Eighth and Barrow are Jerry Neeser's responsibility as part of the subdivision agreement that was entered into as part of the plat that broke this piece off of the U.S. Postal Service site when they disposed of it. So that's a given. Now, the TIA that's been done and finalized, we do have a final TIA now, indicates that there, and the city has desires of putting in a puzzle piece at Barrow and Thirty-Sixth. You know, where Century Theaters and Barrow line up, that there's been a number of accidents at that location, and they would like to change that, so it's not a full four-way movement. So you'd have the ability to have a left-hand turn in from Thirty-Sixth. It would be kind of a covered puzzle piece, so that allows you to come in and it allows people to go into Century Sixteen, but it doesn't allow people to turn westbound onto Thirty-Sixth from Barrow Street. That median, it's a little bit frustrating, and we're still in discussions with the city. It has been on their highway safety improvement program for a number of years. They have not funded that project, and lo and behold, when we show up, it's being put in as something that whatever's required in the TIA, we end up getting to do. Furthermore, they've suggested that we cannot get our CO until that puzzle piece is put in. We are not necessarily okay with that, but we do intend to go talk to the administration and suggest that the, if the city's low on money and they want to put this in a bond issue, that we may construct it so that we can open the store and get reimbursed by the city, since this is a broader issue than, and has been on the HSIP list for years. You know, we think it's a little bad that the city doesn't do the improvement and then jumps on somebody else to do it, even though it's been an identified project that they've intended to do for quite a number of years.
So can we go back, then, to the tying of Barrow to Thirty-Eighth? The impact on the park, how that road is going to snake through between the post office and the park?
Yeah, about half of the property comes from the post office, about thirty feet comes from the park. There is a fence that separates the existing post office parking lot now, and there are some fairly scrubby trees that grow up in the fence and just beyond the fence. Those trees will be removed, the fence will be removed, the parking lot will be reconstructed, and there will be a walking pathway, sidewalk, put on the south side of Thirty-Eighth Avenue that coordinates and picks up and allows for continuous activity all the way up to Thirty-Sixth on Barrow.
So about thirty feet from the existing fence, south?
For the total width of the right-of-way.
Right-of-way, that includes road and sidewalk?
It will fit the road and the sidewalk within that area, yeah. And that was actually accommodated as part of the park's vacation of Fortieth Avenue. Thirty feet was retained as a future roadway and public use easement.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any other questions from the commission? I'm a little confused about whether or not you're doing tilt-up or concrete block. Could you elaborate that? And since I don't have a lot of experience in commercial construction, could you tell me the difference as far as the weather and why you don't know when you're going to build it?
Well, as probably at least one or two of the people on the commission can understand, this is probably on the small side of doing tilt-up. There has been looking at how much work needs to be done to get to the point of being able to put the walls up. Tilt-up's not the easiest thing to do in winter conditions, whereas masonry units can go up. They're not all the same masonry units that you think about. We have textured split face. We also have honed, which is actually ground down and looks like granite for different areas, as well as smooth face on the back of the building. So as a design-build project and trying to match the value with the timing of the construction and the needs of the project, it looks like, because there's an awful lot of masonry being put up in town, that there's adequate crews to put that up, and it works better with the timing of the construction. So it will likely be concrete masonry units of three or four different types being utilized in concert to look like what the tilt-up was going to look like.
And when will you know what, how, when and how you're going to do this?
I'm Jerry Neeser with Neeser Construction. The reason we don't know when we're going to start is we couldn't submit for a building permit until we got through this part of the process. So if you can tell me when the city's going to give me a building permit, I can tell you when we will start.
I can't tell you that, Mr. Neeser.
That's just reality.
Right, right.
That's all. And, you know, it's about economics, and when do we truly get to start is an unknown. And we know we can build easier with block through the winter than we can with tilt-up. To tilt-up, we have to pour the slab first, to pour the walls on the slab, and with masonry, we can do the walls, the roof, and do the floor inside in a more controlled situation in the middle of winter. So hence, probably the choice of masonry, knowing we're rolling into the fall here very fast.
So while I have you here at the podium?
Yes.
I just want you to reassure me that this is not going to look like another Walmart building, because I don't think that's the standard that we want to emulate in Midtown.
You know, a lot of, I agree. And a lot of this exterior, this building, is going to stay the same, as you see right here, either way, because we've got something called Synergy, which is a latex daco-type product that has a sand finish, and a lot of what you see is that. The round is, the radius is, you know, and there's a lot of product on the outside of this building that's not masonry or tilt-up. So you've got a lot going on with the glass and all the other products. It will not.
The other thing to note is that if you look at tilt-up concrete, you get a smooth finish and/or you can use form liners. The actual split-face block that's being looked at and selected will have more raised surface and shadowing effect than the textured tilt-up wood. So we've worked with the staff to show them actual product and where that would be. So everywhere that you see on the plan that was initially reviewed, that it is smooth face on the back of the building for the most part, that will be regular CMU, that will have a coating. And the areas that are around entries or high pedestrian areas for highlights, it will be honed block, which was very expensive and looks like a dark granite. And then where it's in between, again, is that smooth finish of what you think of as typical masonry unit. So it, I think when you stand back and look at it, you would not really be able to tell, except for the type of texturing, but the texture volume would be as good or better than what you get in the tilt-up with the CMU. Just a different material, same effect.
Okay, I'll take you for your word. Thank you. Are there any other questions? You have three minutes for, oh, I'm sorry. You have four minutes and twenty seconds left, and we'll now hear from anyone else who wishes to testify. Would you please come forward and state your name for the record?
Good evening. Pat Phalen, F-A-L-O-N, Anchorage, Alaska. I support the passing of the new zoning for the Natural Pantry. I have allergies, and the store has the items that I can purchase. It will also help hiring to build the store and also to help in the area for employees in the store. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Would the next person please come forward?
Hello, I'm Michelle Johnson. I've been in Alaska for forty years. For the last twenty-four years, I've had a disease called celiac sprue, and for the last twenty years, I've been the Alaska Director of the Celiac Sprue Association, a volunteer position. Without Natural Pantry, my life would be so much different. I would have, I have been trying to help so many people, and they have been a lifeline to me, that I can take people with this disease to Natural Pantry and find food that we can eat. So I just wanted to say that I support Natural Pantry. They've been a wonderful business. They have catered to our needs unselfishly, and I would hope you would give approval to the new store. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would the next person please come forward?
Hi, I'm Brandy Wendler, spelled just like the middle school, no relation. I am a nurse practitioner here in the community. I run the gluten-free support group for Anchorage, the only regularly meeting gluten-free support group in the state. And Vicky has been kind enough to allow us to meet in her cafe on the third Thursday of every month, which is convenient, because when we get new members, we can just take them throughout the store. And I have celiac disease, which is why I eat gluten-free. I also have soy and dairy allergies. It, you know, this is a store that really supports the community, because one in thirteen children now have allergies. A hundred and thirty-three people have celiac disease. To put that into, you know, different terms, if you've never heard of celiac disease, ten to fifteen percent of diabetics have celiac disease, and the gluten intolerance has been connected with autism, diabetes, thyroid disorder, ADD, ADHD. And having a store that supplies food and easy ready-made products that have these things that we're allergic to taken out allows, you know, us to heal. I lost twenty pounds when I was first diagnosed with celiac disease, because there was nothing out there, and now there's a bunch of stuff. And so I would just ask that you would consider that as well when looking to approve this site plan.
Thank you very much. Would the next person please come forward?
My name is Sheila Patterson. I'm a fifty-seven-year resident of Anchorage. Excuse me, I'm a homeowner on Potlatch Circle. I strongly support the Natural Pantry and their endeavor. What a travesty if we do not get this approved. This is an opportunity for us to put a meaningful existence in the middle of the big-box store area right in Midtown. It's close enough to UMed to service the medical community, and as a breast cancer survivor, bilateral mastectomies, I thoroughly appreciate the Natural Pantry. Hadn't been for them, when I was going through my cancer therapy, I wouldn't be here today. So please, don't drive them south of town to build a store. Let's keep it Midtown. It's a great idea. Please pass it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would the next person please come forward?
Hi, my name is Amy Walton. I've lived in Anchorage for a year. I moved up here from Southern California with my husband, who grew up here. I also eat gluten-free, and so I'll just add my voice to the list of people who support the growth of Natural Pantry. There's better selection at that store than I found anywhere in Southern California, and honestly, it's one of the things that factored into my decision to move here.
Thank you very much. Would the next person please come forward?
Good evening. My name is Mike Piekarski, P-I-E-K-A-R-S-K-I, and I have three brief points to make. Number one, I'm in favor of the Natural Pantry due to the fact it's going to promote jobs during the construction of. It will promote jobs after the fact, and it gives our residents an option, gives us a choice, whether to go to the Natural Pantry or the not-so-good-looking Walmart store in the close proximity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would the next person please come forward?
Yes, my name's Al Robinson. I've been going to Natural Pantry now for about twenty-three years. They're fantastic people. They do outstanding business. There are things that I can get there and get nowhere else. They've been supportive. I've had questions. I've asked Vicky. She always had the answers. I've got ten kids I'm raising. And going there, I've found what I've needed, got their assistance, going back over and over here, all these years. I ask that everybody encourage them, bless them, and help them out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kathleen Ahern-Carnes. Natural Pantry has been in business since nineteen seventy-six. I've lived here since two thousand and have shopped there continuously. They offer a wide range of products that are good for everybody, and they also have selections that cannot be found anywhere else in the city or the state. I have nothing but praise for them. This is a very viable economic idea that they have, and it will promote health and welfare in the community. It will help for better eating processes for all of us. I think we all need that. And I would appreciate your vote on this in the positive. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Laurel Fanmiller-Azeegami, and I won't, oh, I guess I should spell it. P is in Peter, F-A-N-M-I-L-L-E-R hyphen A-Z-E-G-A-M-I. I have a couple of things that I'd like to say. When you've heard from the medical community that the Natural Pantry does offer options. I had a son who was medically involved, and I would go there to get products. That made his life much more enjoyable. In fact, when we would be down at Children's Hospital, I'd make a call up to the Natural Pantry to find out what we could use at the hospital there to facilitate his healing. One of the things that I find that the Natural Pantry does do is it employs local individuals. The money stays in Alaska. It does not go outside, because it's not a national chain. I'm a member of American Mothers. It's a nonprofit group. Natural Pantry is known for donating to nonprofit groups. When we have our annual fundraiser, they donate something that we can auction off, and they donate generously. And it's not just our group, it's other groups in the Anchorage area and the state that they do. I think that it's, doctors have taken their patients through and walked through and shown products that different complex medical conditions can participate in eating on this or not of that, and that is very beneficial for those of us with health issues. Let's see, what else do I have? It gives us all options in what we want to purchase, and that's kind of the Alaskan way, and I appreciate that. I think, Ms. Yoshimura, that you would love the grand opening. It would not look like a Walmart at all.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify? Anyone else at all? All right, for rebuttal, we have three minutes. Is it three minutes, or is it? I apologize, Mr. Potter. You actually have four minutes and twenty seconds.
I thought I had more than two minutes. Thank you. I hopefully won't use any more than two. This has been a very exciting project for me to work on. I've worked on a lot of different retail outlets and a lot of different grocery stores. This one has some special things about it, about natural food, its inability to deal with a lot of light and sunlight coming in to the warehouse part or back-of-house part of the building, trying to make that work against a three-sided to make that work against a three-sided piece of property that's highly visible, and how you make that work and still make the building look lively. The architects have done a great job. The owners have been very open to suggestions, but also very forthcoming in telling us what works for them and what doesn't. So I think that you've got a very good product, and I hope the renderings that I've now turned around to the audience really do show off the building and how it will be an exciting place to be. There will be a portion of the building that will be open to the public before store hours and after store hours, have that community aspect of people being able to walk from the adjacent businesses to go and have juice, other drinks, coffee, and be able to congregate there, talk about issues. It may be that the owners of the development have classes so that they can have the experience of showing people how to possibly grow some of their own food, do those kinds of things, so we've got outdoor space to do that as well. I did want to address one thing to Commissioner Pruse, since he's always concerned about distance of walking across a parking lot. Just to put this in scale, and it's important to note that if you went to City Hall and you parked at the curb on 7th Avenue, you would be walking about the same distance from the furthest parking space to the building as going from 7th Avenue walkway to City Hall on the south side of that structure. So it's about a half a block at the most. It's a very comfortable walk. I don't think that's a walk that anybody here thinks is too far. So we're very excited about how we've been able to get parking on three sides of the building, go and get a waiver from the city so that we can put in 10% less parking, because we believe that the parking use is going to work out right. We've been forced to retain an area at the northeast corner of the site in case parking does have to be constructed to meet the needs and the demands, but we believe that we've created a friendly feature here. The building will be good day or night and through the winter, and is very friendly for people to get there by vehicle, pedestrian, bike, and/or bus. With that, I behalf to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Hickel.
Is option B for exterior finishes, is that something we're voting on, or is that something that needs to be added?
Pardon?
Option B for exterior finishes, is that part of your proposal? Is it already part of the proposal, or is that something that needs to be in amendment?
It's already part of the proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Well, there's two options. One is option A, and one is option B. So if Commissioner Hickel, you have a preference, then that would need to be in the form of a condition.
Yeah, just to clarify, that by putting it on the record, I believe it's now in front of you, you would have to vote for the modification to the language of the condition number one to accommodate that. So if you were to make a motion of approval, you'd have to amend condition number one as we requested, and then it would be covered.
Through the chair, in order for you to have ability to do either option, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anything else? Seeing and hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. What is the wish of the commission? Is there further discussion? Questions of staff? Any, all right. May I have a motion? Commissioner Parks.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve case number 2012090 for Postmark LLC, a site plan review for a large retail commercial establishment. I would like to recognize that on page 16 and 17 of the staff package, there are department recommendations, and that we would like to modify item number one as requested by the petitioner. In addition to that, I would like to remove the 72-hour requirement and make that 96 hours. And I think that's an adequate time on this particular location to move snow in Midtown, as hard as it is to get in and out of Midtown during the week.
Thank you. Seconded by Commissioner Hickel. Are you in agreement with the modifications as proposed by Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Pruse.
The change for condition one, could someone read the language?
Yes.
You're proposing on that. End of the record.
Secretary, would you do that, please?
I'm sorry, staff. I believe spoke to that at the beginning, and it was not part of my notes from the presentation.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The amendment is to suggest that at the end of the first paragraph of condition one, the colon is changed to a period, then the following sentence is added, "The final concrete exterior materials to be resolved with current planning division."
Do you have a, do you have a comment, Ms. McConnell, regarding that request?
Staff has no objection to that addition of the condition.
Thank you. Any other comments? Is there any objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. Thank you very much. Oh, I need some, may I have some findings of fact, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to mention that this does meet the comprehensive plan and is absolutely something that should go in Midtown as a retail environment. The pedestrian and vehicle traffic and circulation and safety certainly has been addressed way beyond the standards that are needed. The demand and availability for public services with a bus stop being built in conjunction with this by private money is to be applauded. That's not done often. Noise, water, and other forms of environmental pollution have been addressed. Maintenance and compatibility with development patterns has certainly been met. It has also had, with this public hearing, we've addressed the public's concerns, which to my delight has been none, which is not usually what we hear. So overall, it looks like a project that I'm excited about seeing get put in our city, and I think it's a great location, and I feel very confident Mr. Nieser will turn out a product that we can all be proud of.
Thank you very much. We're going to take a short break, and we'll be back in about seven minutes. Thank you. All right, the Planning and Zoning Commission for August 6, 2012 is now in session. Before us is case number 2011-087, the Municipal of Anchorage and Ordnance Amending Title 21 for Chugak Eagle River Land Use Regulations, Chapter 10. The public hearing is closed. What is the wish of the commission? Commissioner Mulcahy.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Title 21 for Chugak Eagle River Land Use Regulations, Chapter 10.
All right, as amended, or what is it?
I'm moving to approve the redlined version as presented.
All right.
That is the document, the redlined version.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Seconded by James Ferguson. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, ma'am. We've had work sessions, and we've gone through this document, made several recommendations and amendments. Most of those are incorporated into the redlined version. However, there are one, two, three, four, I believe four amendments that we have not yet reached a consensus or had a vote on, so we'll need to make individual amendments and discuss those individually. But again, overall, I think the Chapter 10 reflects the thoughts and concerns from Chugak Eagle River on how Title 21 would best serve that community.
All right, thank you very much. And we had a second from Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner Ferguson, do you have any comments? All right, thank you very much. Do I have any objections? Seeing and hearing none, that redlined version, where those amendments are approved now?
No, no, that, we need to now make amendments to vote on these.
Oh, I thought we were separating them. I'm sorry. My apologies. Okay. All right.
All right, so I need to make a motion, I need to make a motion to approve number five on the table, which is, should the zoning districts in Chugak Eagle River be different from the zoning districts in Anchorage? Do the proposed zoning districts implement the comprehensive plan? So I recommend that we approve the redlined version with the additional Chugak Eagle River zoning districts. Is that correct?
And that's the motion to amend?
Yeah, motion to amend.
Okay.
And again, my motion would leave those zoning districts in the document.
As amended for Chapter 10 for Chugak Eagle River.
Correct.
Number five. And then we have this supplemental here.
I want to make sure they're changed in here. That's one thing that we want to do.
So we've been, it's been moved and seconded for the proposed amendment number five, 21.10.040, that supports different zoning districts and requirements for the Chugak Eagle River area. Is that your understanding? All right, and you have seconded that motion? All right, thank you very much. I am not going to be supporting the motion. I do recognize that the Chugak Eagle River area has some differences from the municipalities, from the general bowl area. However, it is part of the municipality of Anchorage, and I do not believe that the differences in zoning districts are merited. I feel it is an accommodation to a special interest group, and although I recognize the BLM issues that support some variations in particularly the large lot residential zoned areas, I believe that there could be a way to accommodate those needs from that particular community without a separate and more distinct changes in zoning districts. I think it is important that the Chugak Eagle River area recognize that it is not just a rural community. It does have urban, and it has suburban as well as rural areas and districts. So I will not be supporting the motion. Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the way that this is presented is sort of an all-or-not package. I'm having a little bit of trouble with, and I recognize that our decisions here are advisory to the Assembly. You know, that said, there are some things in the residential districts in particular that concern me. There's some slight differences that otherwise would be the same zoning district, for example. Number two, requiring conditional use permits for multifamily greater than four dwelling units on a lot is significantly higher bar than anything that we've passed in the Anchorage Bowl area. I don't agree with it, and I don't believe that there have been standards put forth that are conditional use standards that would tell you how you're even going to comply or get a conditional use permit for multifamily dwelling units. And this is, I think the distinction is it's multifamily in multiple dwell, in multiple structures. You know, that said, having to come in and have a conditional use permit for five detached single-family condo units in an R3 zoning district, I don't think is the intent of the Chugak Eagle River Comprehensive Plan. So I don't know that we're prepared to dive into the details of these zoning districts, but those are among my primary concerns. I do see rationale for having commercial, rural commercial or rural industrial districts. I do see those as being legitimate differences. But I have a concern that we're acting not consistent with the comprehensive plan by granting some of these restrictions against residential development, and for that reason, I won't be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Ms. Dean.
I will not be supporting the motion either. I'm a remodeling contractor, and I speak to probably five homeowners every week that want to know if they can put an addition or a deck on their home. Now I'm going to have a whole nother book that's going to have cumbersome for homeowners to know what they can and can't do with their property. It's very difficult already to explain to people that, gee, I'm sorry, you can't. You're over your percentage of lot coverage. Now I have to look at that. I have to look at any potential administrative site plan issues. And now we have, it's just a whole slew of issues that compound the unknown for so many people that have no idea what planning and zoning is all about and how it affects their property.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dean. Commissioner Hickel.
Yeah, I think the request for the conditional use was in response to multiple dwellings on one lot in the site condo situation, and how do you have some kind of control over that? And out there, they don't have a permitting authority, and I struggle with how they're going to be able to control development. I don't know how rigorous the process is going to be. I don't know who is going to control the conditional use unless it comes, is that going to come through us? Can I pose that as a question?
Yes. Yes, it will.
Okay. And the other thing is, is on these zoning districts, what was, makes me comfortable is that they have some scientific polling data that shows this is, you know, these are the changes that the community wants, and because of that, I can support it.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments? We will need to use, Commissioner Ferguson.
Could we have the motion reread for clarity?
Yes.
I move to approve the Chugak Eagle River zoning districts as proposed in the redlined version.
Thank you.
The redlined version doesn't include...
Right, the redlined version has the Chugak Eagle River designated zones and the changes that we recommended on the definition of those zones.
But this amendment that we're discussing for number five needs a decision from Planning and Zoning, so it's not...
So the motion is to leave it as presented in the red line, so if we, depending on how we vote, it either goes forward as is, or those zoning zones get deleted. Correct?
Yes.
That's my understanding.
All right. Do we need further discussion on this matter? Do we need further discussion on this matter? Or is everyone prepared to vote at this time? All right, will you use your machines, please? A yes vote will provide individual zoning districts. Yes, thank you very much. It's late at night. All right. That motion fails. So under those circumstances, this this motion fails to approve separate zoning districts for the Chugiac Eagle River area. I guess Tyler, would you well, I don't know that I can do this. Be willing to Commissioner Ferguson, are you going to help me out here? Okay. All right, very good. I like that idea. Let's keep going.
Well, I don't know that.
Commissioner Mulkey?
Yeah, I don't know that I'm sorry. I know that number 11, if we don't have separate R6 setbacks.
It's the setbacks.
So we want to vote on a change for setbacks for R6. All right, I will move.
For R6 to accommodate the BLM lots.
Right.
Then I will move that we approve number 11, paragraph 20, or chapter 2110, 060, C6. We move to approve the R6 setbacks as set forth in the red line version.
All right, that motion's been seconded by Commissioner Parks. Is there any objection to the motion? Does anyone want to speak to the motion? No, Commissioner Robinson, you're in the queue.
Yes, I'd like to clarify. So so we're could someone explain to me what we're actually doing by reducing the setbacks in the R6? Haven't we just approved them anyway by or I guess? So we don't have any zoning districts, but now we've got a we will at least agree on setbacks if we were to have zoning districts. Is that what we're saying?
Well, I think we do have zoning districts. They're just not different than what we've provisioned, what we have recommended to the Anchorage Assembly as far as zoning districts within the municipal bowl. What we have done is said by this recent vote of four to four is that the zoning districts for Chugiac Eagle River should not be different than the zoning districts in the immediate Anchorage Bowl. And what item number 11 does is make an exception to that by accommodating setbacks, a reduction in setbacks in the R6 zone.
Okay, I mean, and I would like to clarify that I believe our earlier motion that was defeated was was really a motion on not accepting all of the zoning districts as they were presented. I mean, I think and I think we're confusing that with the basic question of should they be should there be any differences among zoning different? But as I understand it, I think that we'll come back and visit it at some point.
But in the interim, may I ask Ms. McConnell to make to voice her opinion, please?
Could you ask that in the form of a question?
Ms. McConnell, could you please clarify for us, if you can, what we accomplished? In my opinion, what I thought we were accomplishing was a vote that negated any differences in zoning between Chugiac Eagle River and the immediate Anchorage Bowl. That's what I was voting on. And that's what I thought I was voting on.
Based on the discussion that you held at your work session on whether or not there should be a separate slate of zoning districts for Chugiac Eagle River or not, in my mind, the action you took tonight was to agree that there should not be a separate slate of zoning districts for Chugiac Eagle River. And thus, the zoning districts that you have in the bowl would also apply in Chugiac Eagle River, recognizing that you may come back and address certain specific instances like a rural, commercial or a rural, industrial. Can you then change the standards of one of those districts?
I think you can.
I suppose you can recommend that if you so desire.
Right.
It kind of goes contrary to what you previously agreed you were going to go forward with as a as a recommendation. But but it's certainly within your power to recommend that.
All right, that's what I thought we were doing. So that is we have a little we have some verification for that from Erica. We have Tyler in the queue and Stacy Dean in the queue. Tyler?
So I thank you for that interpretation. I'm not sure I'm quite there with you. But that said, for what we're discussing at the moment, could someone describe to me what what the set where we show in this document, what we're reducing the setbacks to, from what to what?
All right. Erica?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On so I'm looking at what Sally Kukos provided. And it's on page 47. The Chugiac Eagle River R6 dimensional standards, as proposed, are 25 feet in the front, 15 feet in the side and 25 feet in the rear. And the bowl R6 setbacks, I'm just going to double check before I put my foot in my mouth, are 50 feet in the front and rear and 25 feet in the side.
Commissioner Ferguson? Yes, and that has to do with the BLM issue. Yeah, yeah.
Through the chair, Mr. Ferguson. No, I see the front and rear setbacks being halved as well. In the bowl, the R6 setbacks are 50 feet. That's my understanding. Front, side and rear, all three.
There's no motion yet. Okay, then Peter, you're making a motion. All right. Okay, and who seconded it? All right, and Mr. Parks seconded. Is there any more discussion? Commissioner Hickel, I thought I saw you in the queue.
Through the chair, I just wanted to the question was what was this for? And it was a major house cleaning issue that Eagle River had asked for to bring enough properties into compliance that they thought it was needed.
Yes, all right, thank you very much. Is there objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. Commissioner Mulkey, item number 19?
Yes, item number 19, chapter 2110, 070J. I guess the correct motion is move to delete. No. Yeah, move to delete, which is what we have in in the red line version, correct? Move to approve deletion.
Of the residential.
Design standards.
All right.
J1.
All right, we have a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Does anyone want to speak to the motion? Tyler Robinson?
Yes, I believe the reason that we discussed this in our work session, that we were proposing to delete the residential design standards is because they were so minimal that it frankly made no sense to even pretend to have them. And I guess with that, I would I would also just comment that, you know, again, if we're so concerned about residential development in in sort of advocating conditional uses, why, you know, we basically this to me, this points out to some of the inconsistencies in this document. And I think the work that still needs to happen moving forward on it. But but I agree for the purposes of what we see here on this paper, I don't think it's worth having the residential design standards as written.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Mulkey?
And I believe at that work session, the director also mentioned that he didn't have no ability to enforce it or very limited and be virtually unenforceable. So he was okay with deletion.
Commissioner Hickel?
That's basically basically what I was going to say is that if you do adopt the standards, how would you ever enforce them? They don't have a permitting authority. It would fall on the zoning commissioner to do it or the zoning commissioner or the zoning desk. And it's not appropriate venue to do it, so why open up a hornet's nest?
Well, I am not going to support the motion for the deletion of residential design standards. I don't care how minimal they are. I think some are better than none. And all you have to do is look at one or two of certain developments in downtown Eagle River to understand that you do need some residential design standards. And so I will not be supporting this motion. I would say this about residential builders. During this last decline of the last four years, builders have done an admirable job of improving their product at a reasonable cost that is market driven, that is not to be taken, that this is how it will always be in the future. And without some form of residential design standards, we could have product ending up looking very much like some of the product that we never want to see again in this community, whether it's in Anchorage or Eagle River. So I will not be supporting this motion that would allow for no design standards. I don't really care how it's implemented. I only know that for the betterment of the community, that there needs to be some design standards. So I will not be supporting the motion. And so we will need to use our machines. All right, that motion passes. And so we need to move on. Item number 22? Peter?
I'm trying to figure out how to word this one because it's not we deleted it in here. So it's moving to approve. I guess it's the deletion of the limitation on the number of home occupants, home occupations in a residential unit, correct?
I think I think what might be is to say that two home occupations are allowed at each residential unit.
I'll accept that.
Okay, all right. So it's been moved by Peter Mulkey and seconded by Terry Parks. Do you have any comment?
I think it's very not uncommon that you have multiple small home occupations in that area and it fits the neighborhood.
Are there any other comments? Are there any other objections? Seeing and hearing Commissioner Robinson?
Yeah, I think that I won't be supporting this. And it's it's not that I won't support two occupations. It's just that what's currently presented lacks in total guidance. And I go back and I read I read some of the documents that the consortium provided on what people would like to see in Eagle River. And they say, you know, as few regulations as possible and we don't want the MOA here. But that's fine until the two guys next door to you and the guy across the street goes ahead and puts up two 9,000 square foot accessory billing buildings. I mean, there is legitimate concerns here on what you can do. And I think that the citizenry of Eagle River would like a little more say than than approving it as as worded. So again, I my objection comes from the haste in which we're going through this document. And as it moves on to the Assembly, I encourage the Assembly to strongly consider whether this type of permission is in the best interest of all residents of Eagle River. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Seeing the and hearing the objection, we will need to use our voting machines. Are there any other comments before we vote? All right, please use your machines. That motion passes in a vote of five to three. Okay. I think that's all of them. All right, is there any Commissioner Parks?
Madam Chair, I think we need to address that there are some changes that we made in Chapter 10. They're going to affect the I'm sorry. In Chapter 10 that we've done and some of the other changes that we've made. And somebody needs to go through and make those changes like landscaping and some of those kind of things. It needs to be detailed. There are some things that are still in conflict in this document. And we expect those to be taken care of through the Assembly process and with Mr. Wheeler's department and the legal department, so.
All right, thank you. I think and Erica, would you please pass that comment on?
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Parks, I believe you have a resolution. What?
Those were amendments to the main motion. And now we need to vote on the main motion approving all of Chapter 10.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Mulkey, did you want to make a motion? Oh, it's on. All right, I apologize. All right, so now we have to have call the question. Let's use our machines. What?
Just a second, I'm having a computer glitch. There we go.
All right, thank you very much. That motion passes now. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Parks?
Madam Chair, as you are well aware, we had a resolution that we had complete for us regarding Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation of chapters 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 12 and 14. And I guess we could include Chapter 10 in it. That has been passed out to each one of the commissioners. Because we don't have a resolution number on this, we will be bringing this forward at the next meeting for a vote and the consent agenda. But I'd like for everybody to review it, make sure there's no changes to be made prior to turning it over to staff to be able to present it at the next meeting.
All right, thank you very much. At this particular time, I would like to reintroduce Erica McConnell, who has accepted a permanent position as the current Planning Director. And I know she has a few comments that she would like to make. Erica?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am pleased to have been selected to be the current Planning Manager. And I look forward to working with all of you as we move forward through time. That said, I did want to pass out something for your consideration for next week. On July 2, the body indicated that you were interested in changing your policy on the submittal of changes to application.
the submittal of changes to applications or changes to conditions of approval after the staff packets had been delivered to you. This does take an amendment to the policy that's always presented on the back of the agenda, and so I do have proposed language. I will pass it out and have it on the agenda for your discussion and adoption next week. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, any comments? Well, I'd like to thank all of you for all of the work that you've done for all of the chapters of Title Twenty-One. It's been a Herculean effort, and we'll see how it proceeds from here. In particular, I want to thank Commissioner Parks and Commissioner Ferguson for responding to the Anchorage Daily News, and I want to let all of you know that I have written a compass piece explaining what the role of the commission was in the Title Twenty-One rewrite, and I assume that, given the level of interest by the Anchorage Daily News and the current Title Twenty-One rewrite process, that it will appear forthwith. So thank you all. I would entertain a motion for adjournment if there are no other comments? You're voting yes? You can't, all right, okay. Who is making the motion for adjournment? Commissioner Hickel is making the motion for adjournment. Ms. Dean is making the motion, the second motion. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.